We have a public hearing tonight on the annexation of the city right-of-way, an additional 600 feet on each side of I-70 and the surrounding right-of-way. Mr. Gervail, you'd like to address that first?
If I can't answer it, I'm scripted.
Mayor and Board of Alderman, we have a public hearing tonight in which we have, I would ask as a preliminary matter, the public hearing notice for tonight's public hearing, which was published on November 22nd, November 29th, and December 6th be made a part of the record by reference. Additionally, we also have a Exhibit A, plan of intent, which is the City of Warrenton, Missouri intends to provide municipal services for an unincorporated area of land that is under consideration for annexation by the City of Warrenton, Missouri, property consistent of the entire park of Interstate Highway 70 and the surrounding right-of-way, which is located in Warren County, Missouri, and lies west of the present city limits. This is once again, as the mayor stated today, further of 600 feet of the progressive annexation by involuntary. So I would ask that that Exhibit A, the plan of intent regarding existing land, street conditions, water and sewer services, fire protection, police protection, parks and recreation, other municipal services, taxation, zoning, and effective date be made a part of the record, which is addressed in Exhibit A that I'll hand to the clerk when I finish. And finally, I would ask that a copy of our ordinances of the City of Warrenton be made a part of the public hearing record by this reference. Beyond that, do you guys have any questions?
I have nothing further than to sit.
Do we have any questions or concerns from the public regarding the annexation proposal? Hearing none, we're going to move on. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Board of Alderman for the City of Warrenton on December, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, wrong year.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, December 18th, 2012. We usually start our meeting, I got it, I was looking down at the minutes. We usually start our meetings off with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone would stand and follow Alderman Cornell and the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of minutes, open and executive session minutes for December 4, 2012. Any concerns or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the open and executive session minutes of December 4, 2012.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the open and executive session minutes of December 4, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer, absent. Alderman Flake is absent. Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Next item is on three, be regular board meeting minutes from December 4, 2012. Any corrections or additions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the regular board meeting minutes from December 4, 2012. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Item four, we always give the public an opportunity to address the board if you have any questions or concerns. We ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes. Come forward to the podium at this time and state your name, and we'll be glad to listen to any thing anybody has to say. Not hearing from anyone, we'll extend that same courtesy to the Board of Alderman. Anybody on the board have anything you'd like to address to the public?
I was briefly, I was pleased to see the completion of the Highway 47 lighting, although I've gotten a few negative comments or concerns. Overall, the response has been very positive, especially the appearance of the city. I also, even though Guy is not here, want to commend the Public Works Department. I brought to their attention a couple weeks ago some faulty sidewalks on College. The problem being that a gentleman needed those sidewalks to get some doctor-prescribed exercise from some recent procedures, and they were horrible. When I contacted Ms. Thorne, she said that those were on the list for improvement. They pushed those forward, got those completed in a matter of about a week and a half time after I spoke with her, and it was nice to see them be able to meet the needs of the citizens.
Anyone else? That means we go to the mayor's report. First thing I'd like to say, I'd like to say on behalf of the City of Warrenton, we'd like to extend our sympathy and condolences to the Alderman Flake family and his children. Mr. Flake could not be here tonight, his wife passed away over the weekend, and visitations going on as we speak, so we'll be thinking about them. I also, like Alderman Cornell, I had many compliments about the street lights along 47. I think they give a new look to that stretch of the highway, a new look to the city. Very impressive. My only complaints were that a couple people thought they should have been taller and more light, lighting up the pavement more, but there's an issue with MoDOT owning the highway there, and you've got to meet their specification if you're going to put street lights in, so we had to stay with what we call sidewalk lighting system, so. The only other thing I was going to mention on my schedule, last week I had the opportunity to tour the Coke plant through the Chamber of Commerce. Very interesting tour. They are very secretive and selective on who they let into the plant and what you get to see and observe, but very high-tech, very impressive situation. Unbelievable the amount of products that go out of that plant each day, but we're fortunate that our community has a plant of that nature and that size, so that was very entertaining for me. I'm going to move on to item 6A. It's that time of year where I have to appoint some people to fill out various boards, and what I'd like to do with the board, I would like to present them in a block on each one of the items, on each different board, unless you have an issue or concern about someone, and then I'll break them out one at a time. Is there anybody that has a reason why I couldn't do them a block at a time?
I don't.
My first recommendation is, on the Board of Adjustments, I would like to reappoint Teresa Scott and Scott Costello to that board. They're both serving on that board now, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve my appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the mayor's appointment for a five-year term for Teresa Scott and Scott Costello. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. On the Building Board, I'd like to recommend an appointment, a reappointment of Kevin Gilhousen, John Luke de Meyer, and a new person on that board, Jim Pryor. Jim's in the construction business and works mainly commercial construction in St. Louis, St. Charles area, and he's agreed to serve on that board, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve my appointment on the Building Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Kendall to approve the mayor's two-year term appointments of Jim Pryor, Kevin Gilhousen, and John Luke de Meyer. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. The next, the Board is a Planning and Zoning Board. I'd like to reappoint Ron Jurgismar to that board. He's serving on that board at this time. I have another new person that's volunteered his services to the committee, is Jason Cullen. So at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of a four-year term on Ron Jurgismar, Jason Cullen on the Planning and Zoning Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow to approve the appointment of Ron Jurgismar and Jason Cullen on the four-year Planning and Zoning Term. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Next board's a little tougher to fill, Tourism Commission. There's some requirements on filling those slots that you have to have, you have to be in that profession on certain limits, like the, one person has to be in the bed and breakfast business or the hotel business, another person has to be in the tourism business itself, and I had a difficult time meeting that tourism requirement. Rodney Haupt is the manager of the Holiday Inn here in Warrenton. His daughter had to leave that board because of moving out of the city. Rodney resides in the city now, and he volunteered that he would take that position. Mike Shaw Harvey's a reappointee on that board, and Tammy Miller was my toughest one. Tammy's in the banking business, and her qualifications to be on the Tourism Board is through her Board of Directorship with the Chamber of Commerce. I think the Chamber's a good tourism committee, and we thought we could stretch that enough for her to fit that mold, so. At this time, I'd recommend we appoint Rodney Haupt, Mike Shaw Harvey, and Tammy Miller on three-year terms to the Tourism Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Tallow, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the mayor's appointment on a three-year term for Rodney Haupt, Mike Shaw Harvey, and Tammy Miller to the Tourism Commission. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. One of the persons I just appointed here on the Planning and Zoning Board is Jason Cullen. Jason's here in the audience. If you'd mind standing, I'll introduce you to everybody. Jason's in the medical business, registered nurse, is that your title? You and your wife both? No, just you, okay. Jason lives out in Ashen Meadows, and I've known him for quite some time, and he's volunteered that he'd like to get more involved in city business and city politics, and he's a good place to start on that Planning and Zoning. Very important board for the Board of Alderman. We rely heavily on you people to give us the right guidance and direction, and appreciate your volunteering part. Thank you, Jason.
Good to meet you.
I'm ready to move on to item seven, Director of Operations Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is the full-time leave request policy. If you'll remember, at last meeting we had presented a permanent part-time leave request policy, and there had been a request to add some additional language to that to further clarify the meaning of what the extension was. So the language in both the permanent part-time and the full-time leave of absence policies were the same in that area. So what I've done is added language. It is the shaded area in your leave of absence policy that really speaks to the leave request being extended under extreme circumstances related to some kind of health condition that's documented for those who are not covered under FMLA or who do not have sick leave that's available for that. So this language is, in essence, the same type of language that's in our FMLA and sick leave policy, so now all the policies coincide with each other. We added the very same language in the full-time leave of absence policy that we added in the permanent part-time policy, which is the next one on your agenda. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The city attorneys reviewed it and approved the language.
Certainly addresses the concerns that I brought up at the last meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning that? We need a motion on that to approve that?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain that at this time.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallow to approve the full-time leave request policy. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Permanent part-time leave request policy.
It is the same change, same language, as I said, that was in the full-time leave of absence policy, but they do need to be approved separately, so we have a record of their approval.
Make a motion to approve the changes in the policy to the permanent part-time leave request policy.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Tallow to approve the permanent part-time leave policy request. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Tallow?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero with two absences. Operational updates?
I do have a couple of just notes for you. One is that our trash rates for the residential and senior single-family, what they call hand stops, are increasing per our contract, 20 cents for the regular residential and 10 cents for the senior. That brings the regular residential to $9.50 and the residential senior to $8.35. The other rates are not changing, and those changes will be reflected on the utility bill that will go out the end of this month. So just wanted to note that for you.
That's it?
Yes, the only other thing is to report that we are still working on the sewer credit for the Warrenton apartments. We had met, asked for some additional information from them regarding your occupancy to try to get some comparative months for numbers to be used, and I believe we received that information back yesterday. So by next meeting, we should have something put together for you.
Very good.
That's all that I have for you this evening.
Okay, we're going to move on to Chief of Police Greg Huttig.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The other thing I have this evening is the monthly report from November. The numbers are back, not in line. I think that's coincidental with getting an area officer online, although he's still in training. Our call volume has gone down a little bit, so we're able to be a little bit more proactive patrol operations, traffic mostly. So that really does get our numbers back in line to where they were last year compared to them. The other thing of significance is that we did locate some of the stolen property from the Walden Hollow car break-ins, specifically the guns that had been taken, so we're really pleased with that, and really a combined effort between patrol officers and a detective bureau to identify some suspects. But we still don't have charges on them, but intend to get that wrapped up and over to the prosecuting attorney's office pretty soon.
I like your, the way you present your police log here and so forth. One of the things that jumps out at me is it doesn't seem to matter whether I work on a day shift or a night shift, the number, volume of calls is about the same.
Right.
You know, they all kind of even out by the end of the year or end of month, so that's interesting. How's the ride-along program coming?
It's really, really slow. I, well, I'm disappointed with the number of people that have come out or ridden. I was hoping that we would see more participation with that, but it's.
I am too. I think it's a good program. Whenever I run across someone that has a complaint or criticizes the police department, the first thing I tell them is, you need to do a ride-along at least one time, and then come back and talk to us about what you like or dislike, and, but I'm surprised you're not getting more tickets on that.
Yeah, I do.
Anything else for the chief? We're ready to move on to Building Commissioner, Jim Daly.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have your monthly report for you, the building report, temporary report, and that house that I have properties coming is on there now, so we have a single-family residential home being built. And your property maintenance report, any questions on that?
Are things going to pick up for 2013?
I hope so, but not yet.
Yeah, I understand that for sure.
Jim, that price's a little higher than they normally are in a big-sized home.
Well, they changed the building valuation data numbers that we use, and with the sewer and the water hookups and all that, they're going to go a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Any questions for Jim? That's all, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm ready for Brad Buscic, grounds and maintenance director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have your, all I have for you tonight is the monthly report. Not much changing, doing a lot more maintenance and what have you, so about where we're at right now.
Not much grass to mow right now.
Not much grass to mow. Still mowing a little bit, but not a whole bunch, so kind of hit and miss at cemetery and a few other little places, but.
Yeah, we wouldn't think you'd be needing to mow grass in December, but.
No, that's for sure.
There probably is some green stuff around.
Yeah.
Any questions for Brad?
Hello, sir.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Yeah, that's easy. Melody Rue, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Evening.
First item I have for you is years of service awards. This is a request from the Awards Banquet Committee. Past practice for many years has been recognized by employees' commitment and years of service to the city with local pins. These pins were presented to the employee on the United States Awards Banquet, and ranging prices currently at $31 up to $107. On review of this practice and discussion with several employees, it has become apparent that a great deal of value of these pins is not perceived, since employees can rarely specify where they are currently and have never worn them on a regular basis. This has raised the question of how much value the city is getting from a pin. The banquet committee is vet regarding this and would like to present to us other award options that might be more beneficial to the employees and less greatly.
More greatly appreciated for the dollars spent. If you look on the very last page, I think that was attached, that shows a picture of what the local pins actually look like. And the second page, excuse me, has a breakdown of the awards banquet's option ones, the local pins, which has the current pricing, and then for each five-year, 10-year, 15, 20-year. Option two would provide them with a Visa gift card and the amount set by the board for the corresponding years of service. This would be presented to the employee along with certificate of appreciation at the awards banquet. Option three would provide them with a gift card to a specific restaurant or retail storefront in the amount set by the board for the corresponding years of service. The city would need to provide a list of options to the eligible employees so that the choice could be made prior to the awards banquet. This would then be presented to the employee along with the certificate of appreciation at the banquet. And option four would provide them with a catalog to choose a gift, which I only had four. There was only one for each, like, level of gifts, which I kind of scattered out there for you guys to look at from the company. This catalog along with certificate of appreciation would be presented to the employee at the awards banquet. The employee would then go online or call a direct phone number to redeem their certificate for a gift that would be shipped directly to the residence.
You left my recommendation off.
Well, they're all different.
I told Melody that when I eat at Cracker Barrel, the waitresses come out, they got stars on their aprons, you know, one star, I mean, they're the beginning waitress, and two, and three, and up to a five-star waitress, and then we decided not everybody would wear aprons for the city. I thought, well, maybe I have, maybe we could get that.
Well, it all depends on whether you make it part of the dress code.
Well, that's true, too.
It's up to you, man.
So she left, she left it off of there. I did comment to her, though I work for a company that did all of these things, and over the years, you know, we kept getting the little lapel pins with the diamonds in them. I couldn't even tell you where those things are at today. It's kind of a waste that, you know, I don't have enough to wear them, so I'm looking at the option, too.
My suggestion was two or three.
Two or three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think two's a good idea, gift card. I'd like one with.
Is there any preference from the employees?
I think option two was, I think the committee that was looking at it was thinking it would be their choice if they, you know, didn't want to go out to eat, if there was an immediate need, if they wanted to use it at a gas station or, you know, one of the retail, like Kroger or Mosers or something, then they could do so.
So option two would cover all that, yeah.
Correct.
What about our amounts? Are you, I mean, how do we compare with other municipalities around us? Are we kind of cheap there, or are we right in the middle?
What we did is we used the amounts, basically, that was based on local pins, so that way, you know, we were doing apples to apples is how we were comparing it.
Okay.
I only called a couple of other cities and was discussing with them. I know St. Teeter starts with $50 for five years, and then they add an additional 10 for each year, so you would have 50 at five years, 100 at 10, 150 for 15 years, and so on. And I believe St. Charles was the same, too.
Well, you know, the only reason I bring it up, I'm not sure you could take your spouse out and feed both people for $30. I mean, you might be pretty slim there, so. I don't know, what's everybody, what's the board's feeling on that?
It depends on where you take white castles or something.
I knew you'd be thinking that direction.
No, I think it's a good idea, you're right.
I'm not opposed to increasing it.
I appreciate increasing.
Just being, this is a new concept to me, just being devil's advocate slash Grinch. At the point that we're changing from a lapel pin to honor their years of service to this, isn't it, is it, it's just giving a bonus, and I, I'm not saying that's necessarily bad, that is foreign to me, a government agency giving bonuses. I don't know of, apparently there are other municipalities that do it. I'm only familiar with county government and state government and.
You haven't been getting a bonus, is what you're saying.
No, I have. I think if I would, I, well, again, that's a whole new concept to me, I don't.
It's, I don't think it's out of the ordinary. I mean, the cities that we visit, I don't think I look at it as a bonus, I think it's a thank you for your service and loyalty to the city for staying with us. So if you want to put a bonus label on there, I think a bonus is being bigger than that, than $30, so. So what's your pleasure?
Is that, I'm sorry, is that an issue that has cleared through a state audit? I know some county offices got dinged on the exact same thing, providing gift cards to their employees last year, and, again, I don't want to say that this is bad, but I do have concerns when I've got, I've got knowledge of, I believe it was maybe the assessor and the sheriff that got critical marks. State auditor is only there for suggestions.
Right, I mean, as far as legality of it, I mean, you make a good point, Alderman Cornell, that I don't know of a single county government that does it, small or big, first-class county all the way down. Most cities I'm familiar with that, I mean, you know, there's 96 cities in the St. Louis metro area, I would say probably, this is a guesstimate, 80% maybe even higher do that. It's a very common practice for the gift cards. I know the auditor brought to light some issues with the county, but I thought that was more of how it was done as, or how it was, it was a different issue with it. You know, I know other cities that do it have been audited and not have issues with it. And one of the things we can do is we can talk to the state auditor about it, see if they're going to have a recommendation on it. Now, I don't, I want just my own little peace of mind on this, I would be coming up to my 10 years, and I think Terry's doing this, just so I don't get a 10-year pin.
Oh, you're going to get eight.
Terry, is there anything to do?
And then you can bring me my meal.
That committee is doing it, too.
I was like, do I finally get a pin? She's like, no, we're changing it. I was like, what?
We're going to eliminate those pins.
No, I think we could ask them if there's a concern about it, but I know it is common practice. I know cities specifically that have been audited that the auditors have not made issues with it. It is a common practice.
Could we ask the auditor who's already occupying some space in our building?
She doesn't want to talk to us, so. Is that what you're thinking?
Like, they would have to approve.
Yeah, quite, but, I mean, I could live with whatever. It's fine.
One of our suggestions was maybe go to 15 for the five years, 100 for 10, 150 for 15, 200 for 20. How many 20-year employees we have? Maybe one?
Walter, maybe two that I can think of. Two, Walter, maybe two that I can think of.
It seems like you've been here forty years.
So we're not going to spend a great deal of money on that, though. Is everybody comfortable with that?
I am.
John, Alderman Clark?
As long as Terry's comfortable with it, I don't know how it's affecting our budget or anything.
I don't think we have a large number of awards this year, do we, Melody?
No.
So we'll make sure we budget appropriately next year.
Okay.
Just in case we should have more. Mayor, could you repeat those levels again?
My suggestion was start off at 50 for five years, 100 for 10 years, 150 for 15, and 200 for 20 years.
Thank you.
Need a motion on that, Melody?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to approve the years of service awards program by selecting option two, Visa gift cards. Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Cornell?
I knew I was going to be first. Without an answer from an auditor's authority, I've got to go now.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, three to one with two absences. Okay.
And the last item I have for you is the proposal for Midland GIS Solutions. This is the consulting firm that we had, you guys had approved at the last meeting to do the GIS cemetery map. The proposal came in with a fee of $5,950 for this project. It includes development of the cemetery map, project installation, eight hours of onsite training, and then corrections and future changes, and also six months after the installation, Midland would be available to assist the city. Additional training, however, would be billed at a $75 per hour rate. So with this in mind, I'm requesting the total budgeted amount of $6,450 in the event that additional training would be needed. The city could utilize the remaining $500.
Will this eliminate all of our problems with gray plots?
Well, it would eliminate the paper map having colors colored in that shouldn't be colored in.
It shouldn't.
Exactly.
I was wondering, just wanted to see how you were going to answer that.
Yeah.
I'm amazed of the problems we have with gray plots. I think Phil owns one, and we go there and find out. I really own it. We wonder how that could happen, but it does happen, so...
Yeah, next month or two, I'll be coming to you with something else in the cemetery.
If I die before you do, I'm taking it.
Yeah, there you go.
You guys want to be buried together, are you?
I don't know. We're not talking. Cheryl may have to talk about that.
Possession's not tense, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to Melody's request that we approve Midland GIS Solutions in the amount of $6,450.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Clark, that we approve the bid for a Midland GIS Solutions in the amount of $6,450. Roll call, please.
Alderman Tallo?
Yes.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero with two absences. Item 12, bill number 62-12, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Midland GIS Solutions in the city of Warrenton, Missouri, to develop a GIS map for the city cemetery.
Call for the first reading.
Go ahead.
Call for the first reading of bill number 62-12.
Sir.
Motion made by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Tallo, to first reading of bill number 62-12.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Midland GIS Solutions in the city of Warrenton, Missouri, to develop a GIS map of the city cemetery.
Entertain a motion for second, final, and passage of bill 62-12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kendall, seconded by Alderman Clark, for second and final and passage of bill number 62-12.
In ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Midland GIS Solutions in the city of Warrenton, Missouri, to develop a GIS map of the city cemetery.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Kendall?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.